Good morning and welcome to this morning's city council study session on Thursday, October 23rd. I'm Vice Mayor Glover. I would like to excuse council members Summers and Richens, and our mayor will be arriving shortly, but we wanted to get started. The first item on the agenda is item 1A to hear a presentation discuss and provide direction on the Mesa 2040 Transportation Plan and Transit Master Plan Updates. So turn the time over to Jody and Lenny.
Good morning, Vice Mayor. Glad everybody's here this morning. Council members, I introduce myself. I'm Lenny Hume, Transportation Department Director, representing transportation. I have Mark Fenty and James Hash, or Jim Hash. And in transit, obviously we know Jody down there, Jody Sorrell is Transit Director of Transit Services. So I want to give you a quick update on this presentation, I'll do an introduction and hand it off to Mark and Jim and Jody as we go through the transportation plan. You've received the PowerPoint presentation and along with the plans in your inbox, and it's quite extensive. I have the books here, too. And we do have some more books we can hand out if you'd like to have them. We were just, there's a lot of pages to print out. So just kind of give you a little bit of an update. The first slide here, it says my Mesa Plan. It's kind of, the reason we use that theme is to kind of follow what the general plan, and some people ask, why are we updating the transportation plan? It's in conjunction with the general plan. The same theme was used in the general plan as we did the input from the residents. They carry the same theme. So we did this in conjunction with the general plan. Also, along with the transportation plan, our 2025 Plan had a component in there with transit, which was a small component, but since transit has grown so much and has become such a critical part of Mesa and the region, we kind of separated that piece out and worked together and kind of made it its own separate plan, working together with the transportation plan. The next slide. Just a little bit of background. We started back early in 2000 to do the 2025 Plan, and that was more of a cookbook of what we were doing in transportation, identified things we needed, things we needed to address, but it also identified a lot of projects that we were trying to get done and some recommended funding. The new transportation plan, the 2024 that Mark's going to be presenting is a little bit different approach, is more of a general plan, it's more of a, what I would call a recipe to go along in conjunction with the general plan. Again, it aligns with the general plan. So we started in the spring of 2012, putting the update together, and it was actually these two folks right here, along with Jody and her staff, a very strenuous task, because there's a lot of effort and work that has to go involved, is involved with this. We started in the spring of 2012, doing some long-range planning for the 2040 Plan, excuse me. We have, obviously had public involvement, coordination with a lot of other departments. It's not just the transportation, but it's all the other departments that we have to work with. Did a tremendous amount of technical analysis on the transportation plan with experts. And then the TAB, Transportation Advisory Board, has reviewed this plan three times, or more, many times. We took several sections to them at a time, got their approval, and continued on and got direction from the TAB. So with that, I'd like to hand it over to Mark and Jody and we'll go from there.
Thanks, Lenny. Hi. I started working for the city of Mesa in the fall of 2001, and I began by being part of the completion of the plan. And then, most of my career here has been spent working on the development of plans for the street system. As a city, we got to see the freeway system get completed around our city and many of the arterials. Our department has used the transportation, this transportation, the existing transportation plan constantly. It's a tool that's well-worn and well-used. Other departments use it quite a bit, too. Then, as time moved on, we got to work on projects like Eastmark and the Fiesta District, and we saw a different way to think about streets. So now, with these factors, the completion of a lot of our roads, road network, new ideas towards streets, and what we found along with planning, that our community really wants more livability as we move forward in our transportation effort. As Lenny mentioned, we were fortunate to be working on this at the same time as the general plan, and therefore, what we did was we used the principles in the general plan to build upon, build ours on. And as I just mentioned, when we brought this to the public, we found that they're much more interested in bike paths, sidewalks, and access to things such as transit and their neighborhood commercial areas than a lot of the traditional roadway and freeway issues. And finally, as Lenny was talking about, we're looking at this document, this time, as being more of a usable document, a tool to apply the philosophy in it, rather than creating a speculative list of future projects. And I'm going to talk a little bit about that a little bit later. This is the plan outline. Again, we kind of mimicked and copied the general plan. We broke it into three parts. We, part one's the introduction, goals and objectives. Part two describes and goes through all the elements that make up the, that put together make up the transportation network. And finally, the part three Mesa Circulation Blueprint is the future plan and ideas on implementation.
When we move into part one, we look at Mesa's transportation vision, or the vision for the future of transportation in the city of Mesa. This vision was achieved through continuation of the goals and objectives that were brought forth from the 2025 Transportation Plan. It was achieved through public input, several public input sessions that we did concurrent with the general plan. Also, we used a holistic approach out there that's known as the, as the, as a pattern language. It's a, it's a way of describing a city from the top down, dwelling down, and focusing on each individual neighborhood. And finally, we use the concepts of the concurrently developed general plan. As we move into the, continuing in part one, we move into the goals and objectives. And each one of these were developed to assist in achieving the shared vision for transportation. Part one identified three major goals, each with corresponding objectives. Goal one, as you see here on the screen, addresses Mesa's vision to provide a well-connected, integrated, multimodal transportation network. As we move into goal two, it focuses on a well-balanced, inviting, street network which creates vibrant public spaces and promotes a sense of community. And as we move into goal three, it imagines Mesa's transportation network that promotes diversity of Mesa's public spaces. It encourages dense urban activity centers that will foster economic growth. It connects each individual neighborhood unit to those activity centers where residents can congregate and feel a sense of community and build that sense of community. Now, Mark will describe the understanding of what's contained in part two.
Thanks, Jim. As I mentioned with the outline, part two includes an overview of each of the eight elements of the transportation system. There's three new elements that we added since the 2002 Plan, and that's complete streets, aviation, and intelligent transportation systems, ITS. Complete streets is our first chapter, and it acts as an umbrella element that unifies all these other elements into one nice system. Very briefly, a complete street is a street right-of-way that provides facilities for all users and all modes. And by all users, I mean all types of people, seniors, children, able-bodied, and disabled. Included with the plan, you may have noticed in the appendix, is a complete street policy. We've been working on that for a while, and we decided to include this with the plan so we know where it is, and it gets adopted as a policy for the city with the plan. We essentially do complete streets as part of our standard design templates, but this policy tells the community, tells the region, that we embrace complete street principles. It also provides guidance for future staff and on future projects. The bicycle element is a summary from our standalone bike plan. We took a summary, basically executive summary, and put that in there. Similar to that, the transit element in here is a summary of the Transit Master Plan that Jody just completed. And so Jody will tell you about that.
Since the last transportation master plan was developed, transit, not only in Mesa, but regionally, has grown and become much more visible, and much, everybody has a little bit of interest in it. So we decided to make the plan a little standalone and separate so that we could have a better guiding document for us. The Transit Master Plan has four basic themes to it when it was developed. It's to develop transit priority corridors in the city, to connect activity centers, to prioritize frequency over coverage to help grow ridership, and to balance our local needs with our regional needs. And so, for some of that in the regional needs, we made sure our plan, as we were updating our plan, the town of Gilbert and the city of Tempe were updating their plans as well. And so, we're pretty well-coordinated in that, because transit just doesn't operate within our boundaries. We have to cross boundaries within the region. So just before we start in, just a quick update. Here's our existing bus network. As you can see from the map, most of the arterial streets west of Gilbert Road have fairly good coverage when it comes to bus service. It's as we get further east that some of that becomes a little bit more challenging. And this is our high-capacity transit network. So for high-capacity transit, that's light rail, streetcar, bus rapid transit. And so in Mesa, bus rapid transit would be considered our two-link routes that operate on Main Street to Superstition Springs Mall and down Country Club into Chandler. The Transit Master Plan has five different planning scenarios for us, so it helps, gives us some flexibility to adapt to what's happening. We have one short-term plan, which will take us out to, for about five years. So for the Gilbert Road light rail extension, it covers that period. Then we have two midterm plans, which take us in the 10- to 15-year planning horizon, depending on some different options that could happen. And then we have two long-term planning scenarios, which take us through the end of 2040. So this short-term plan shows the proposed improvements over the next five years for our bus routes, which would be to increase frequency on University, Broadway, Alma School, Country Club, Mesa Drive, and Gilbert Road and Power. And it's to increase frequency on Southern Avenue. Right now, Sunday service on Southern Avenue runs 60 minutes, every 60 minutes. We'd like to get that to every 30 minutes, to be consistent with the rest of the city. And to add trips on some of our express routes, especially the ones that run from Superstition Springs Mall along the 60 into downtown Phoenix, and the one that runs up from the Power Road Park and Ride and Gilbert Road Park and Ride along the Red Mountain Freeway into downtown Phoenix. They're both very popular routes and reaching capacity very quickly. Our long-term, our short-term high-capacity network shows us extending light rail out to Gilbert Road, and as that happens, the Main Street link service obviously would be shortened. That span would shorten. We're also looking at doing some kind of high-capacity transit option through the Fiesta District up Dobson, as, you know, maybe adjusting the link service to go in, go down Southern and connect. The midterm scenarios, which again, take us out 10 to 15 years. This midterm scenario one would extend service on University, Broadway, and Southern, east of Power Road. We get a lot of, a lot of requests for bus service in that area. We had a circulator, a pilot project, a couple of years ago, that was growing and very popular. So we'd like to try to extend that service on, increase service on Baseline. That's another request. We get a lot of, there's a lot of opportunity along Baseline. And then it looks to add new routes on McKellips, Val Vista, and Higley. Then the midterm high-capacity scenario, this is where we have the two options, because we've always, as a city, we've always talked about, when we get to Gilbert Road, we have options for light rail. We can continue down Main Street to Power Road, or, as you'll see in the midterm scenario two, we go south on Gilbert Road. If we go, continue to Power Road, we would adjust the link service accordingly to start and end at Power, but it would also be extended to serve Gateway Airport. And then, you'll notice on the map, there's a purple or magenta Y on Dobson, Country Club, and Southern. That's for a high-capacity option that hasn't yet been determined. There's a study we'd like to undertake that I'll talk about at the end of this presentation, but I just want to draw your attention to that Y area as we, as we go through the presentation. And then midterm scenario two, for the bus system, would again, be to extend the service east of Power Road, increase service on Baseline, and then add service, in this scenario, it's McKellips and Greenfield, as opposed to Higley, as that was in the other, other option. And that really gets to the light rail options, depending on, this high-capacity option shows light rail going south on Gilbert. As we continue to go east, we would need to have some underlying bus service connecting for that. And so depending on which option we would go to, depends on which north-south street makes more sense. So if we continue down Power, connecting at Greenfield makes more sense. If we go down, if we go down Gilbert Road and run along the 60, going down Higley, or going Greenfield makes more sense on this option. Going down Power, Higley makes more sense. So that's, that's where the difference is there. And then again, the Main Street link would be adjusted to, it would go to Gilbert, and it would still continue to serve Gateway. In the long-term scenario, the real only new transit option that we're showing is a route that would extend on Ellsworth between Superstition Springs Mall and the airport. And a lot of that has to do with, with the high-capacity transit option. You'll notice on this line, the green line is, ADOT is doing a passenger rail study, and there's two options that are kind of working their way toward the end of that study. Both of those options go to Mesa, go through Mesa. So our long-term scenarios address how to connect to those options, depending on which option is chosen. So this option is what ADOT calls their orange option, and it goes up past the east side of the airport and runs along the US 60 into Tempe. So we would operate a bus route that runs along Ellsworth to make that connection. And then you can see Power Road, it's consistent with the long-term as far as light rail connections as well. And then long-term scenario two, it would be the same fixed route option, is adding bus service on Ellsworth. And then, this scenario shows the different ADOT option, which has the high-capacity rail option coming up the existing rail corridor through Gilbert into downtown Mesa. So that would, we would adjust our high-capacity options accordingly. If the ADOT passenger rail system goes along the 60, we could operate light rail and passenger rail along that same corridor. So that's why we kind of built in some flexibility for us to look at different options. So along that, we're not wasting any time with some of the recommendations or some of the plans in the Transit Master Plan. The purple Y, as I call it, which is Dobson, Country Club, and Southern, we've been partnering with Chandler to look at doing a high-capacity, doing a study on that corridor all the way down into Chandler for a high-capacity option. It would connect downtown Chandler with the Fiesta District, the Banner Hospital, that area, and connect up into our light rail connection at Sycamore. It would include, you know, looking at, it wouldn't necessarily be fully light rail. It would also look at a bus rapid transit alternative. And that study would be about two years. It would begin in early 15, and it would also, it would come up with different scenarios, just like we've done with our Transit Master Plan, a short-term, midterm, long-term. So we can plan for gradual growth as opposed to, here it is. This is the study area for the, for the proposed study. And the study, funding for the budget, for the funding for the study, so the study budget is about just under $700,000. Our share of that study is, our share of that budget is about $322,000. The deal that was worked out is Chandler will pay 100% of the study upfront, and Mesa will repay Chandler, depending on what happens with a future sales tax. If Prop 400 is extended, we'll repay them in 2027. If there's no extension of Prop 400, then Mesa has more time to repay that money. So that, that scope of work and that funding agreement will be coming to you for your consideration. And if this slide is wrong, I apologize. On November 17th, at your council meeting, not November 3rd. So with that, we'll go back to the...
Thank you. Just a comment. As you know, I represent the city on the RPDA board, and I'm currently Chair of Valley Metro Rail. And so, I've been working with Jody and staff and elected officials from Chandler on this issue. And since we started looking at this several months ago, I've been talking about this proposal, this idea, to various developers in the Fiesta District area, to the colleges, and to residents in the area. And I have to tell you, it's something that has generated a tremendous amount of excitement for long-term sustainability in this, in this corridor, thinking the tremendous population of employees that we have with the hospital, the numbers at the colleges. There's a new 400-unit apartment complex set to break ground at Extension and Southern. There are certainly density of users along the area, but I think it also, for Mesa, creates some very interesting development opportunities over the, over the course of time. And I think designating it as a high-capacity transit corridor is a smart move. It's very good cooperation with Chandler. It's the most logical way to get the high-capacity transit to Chandler. We always have the challenge of getting over the railroad tracks and which street is best to do it over. It also, I think, affords some interesting opportunities. The Federal Transit Administration is very interested in also looking at options in addition to linked buses, as, for example, streetcar lines as well, as either an alternate use to light rail or an interim use to light rail. The Tucson Streetcar Project is something that opened with great fanfare. I think Kerry, I think, was able to see it, and it's really doing very well. It's something I hope that our council and other staff be able to get to see sometime in the near future. And so, at least from my perspective, this is something that has a lot of positives in terms of regional cooperation, regional economic development. And at least the response I've received from the various groups that I've talked about it with has been really overwhelmingly positive. So that's my, my pre-pitch before we deal with it in a couple of weeks.
Thank you. What you see here is the future roadway plan, and it's a, this is a typical tool found in transportation plans. Usually, this is then followed by a list of proposed projects that'll be built over the next 20 to 40 years. Working with the current plan, we realized that this wasn't practical due to changes that occur over time. So instead, we'll build projects at that specific time and as funds are, become available. The transportation plan will be used as guidance for determining projects and then using the concepts in there on the design.
Part three of the, of the plan defines Mesa's circulation plan for the future. Majority of Mesa's arterial networks are already built out and is in, is what it is. So it'll now become transportation staff's focus to start assisting the general plan in activation of each one of the individual neighborhoods in the city. We'll do that by providing complete streets that help to promote mode choices for, for the folks in each one of those neighborhoods, helps, help with better connecting those folks to services and employment in each one of the surrounding activity centers or neighborhood nodes. And finally, we'll assist in promoting the economic development through the alignment of the land use vision that was set forth in the general plan that you saw in the months prior.
Before Mark goes on, we, Mark and I kind of experienced this in Councilmember Richens's district Tuesday night, when we were discussing a neighborhood traffic calming project that we have out there in the neighborhood, getting together and talking about what they want to see, and trying to get the connectivity of reaching out. And over the years, we've built subdivisions that have walls, and we don't let people cross those walls. And it was amazing to watch the neighborhood support that. And Mark and I were just smiling back there going, that's part of the transportation plan. That's the idea of branching out, and is there a little piece of sidewalk we could put in here? Is there a point in which we could get somebody closer to a transit facility, short distance, a walking distance, or biking distance? And the dynamics in that neighborhood meeting was neat. It followed right along with the transportation plan.
When you, when you look at the map that's in front of you on this slide, you'll notice that on the, on the right-hand side is, is your typical road network as it's, as it stands today. You'll, you'll notice that from the, from the interior of each one of the neighborhoods, there might be a disconnect or a, or a barrier that prevents folks from, from accessing those activity nodes at their commercial, at the commercial centers at each one of the arterial streets. If you look to the left side, this is what Mesa Transportation Department envisions, along with the general plan, to improve connectivity. You'll see that we, you'll, these diagonal lines could represent an illustration of shared use paths or neighborhood connectivity that extends those walksheds that you see in, represented by the orange blob in the middle of the map. You'll, you'll extend those walksheds to neighborhood, commercial, to employment centers, also to access to your transit, both regional, light rail, and local bus, that will help folks connect to their employment centers, give them more choice when they leave their house every morning. They can choose not only to get in their car, but to, maybe they want to walk that day, or ride their bicycle, or choose another mode of transportation, or a combination of all. So that's, that's where the vision within part two and part three is combined together, and, and what transportation planning staff is hoping to instill through the complete streets policies that we're instilling, that we're having adopted.
Finally, just some notes on our implementation ideas. There's four main ways we can implement the principles of this plan. First, my colleagues and I review the plans that are developed for projects, both public and private side, from other city departments like engineering and building safety. As part of that review, we can encourage the use of the concepts in the plan. On top of that, we're, as soon as we're done with this, we're moving into creating a urban street design guide. And it'll be kind of modeled after some, some national models that are used out, out there. And it's a, it's a much more overall kind of incorporation of ideas when, when we do design, instead of a one-size-fits-all, kind of, which we, which we kind of, in some ways, do right now. Finally, we're partnering with neighborhood services and they're building stronger neighborhoods meetings. In those, in that process, what we're going to do is, it's convenient, the neighborhoods, the registered neighborhoods are geometric shapes, like a square. And we can apply the ideas that you saw on the last slide to those neighborhoods and bring them forth, and like Lenny was talking about, kind of discuss options and see what, what would work with the neighborhood. This type of implementation will allow more flexibility in design, again, like I said, instead of one-size-fits-all. This vision will not take place overnight, but it'll take place in little bits while balancing all the modes and using some imagination.
So Mayor, Council, we are asking, seeking for input, your input on this, both these plans. And also, we're also looking, also like to, after you get at your input, and we have some adjustments that we need to do to the plan, we'd like to put this on as a resolution on the 17th, November 17th council agenda. Obviously, tremendous amount of effort and work has gone, and I want to thank Mark and Jim and Mr. Sanderson back there, our Deputy Transportation Director and Traffic Engineer, as energy and effort to put into it. And then along with the general plan, the other departments that helped us develop this plan, a tremendous amount of work has gone into it. Some frustrated moments at some points, but we persevered, persevered through the process, and we're very, very happy with the plan we have, plans we have put together.
Great, thank you. It's obvious, the amount of work that's gone into this. So we appreciate it. It's, I'm very impressed. I heard you say you're looking for some feedback. The question that comes to my mind, that I think is related to the issue that Dennis spoke of a little earlier, I'm supportive of the idea of pursuing, or this, working with Chandler on, on the study to explore the light rail route that goes out to the Dobson and Southern area. Is that something that requires a separate action item from us, or is that? I understand adopting this plan on the 17th of November, that's great, I get that. But is there anything more that we need to do to facilitate the, the study that was mentioned?
On November 17th, I'll be bringing us, the funding agreement and the scope of work to you for your consideration for approval. And if you approve that, then we'll start work on the study in early 2015. So right after the first of the year, we'll work on the study and we'll come back and give you update. give you updates throughout the study as appropriate. And then hopefully it'll be done in about two years so that we can start planning to, in the future, to see how to implement the recommendations.
Okay, thank you very much. Council, yes, Mr. Vice Mayor. We'll defer, of course, to the Honorable Mr....
To the older guy.
Yeah. I didn't say that.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. I also, thank you, you did a great job on the plan. I'm looking, I'm certainly supportive of what you're doing. But I also want to thank Jody. A lot, what I hear from members of my community, particularly on the east side of Mesa, is accessibility and trying to get into, to be able to get onto the bus system and to be able to access that. So I appreciate your short-term, I think it was in short-term number one, that you're really looking towards that, because we really need to do some improvement. I know some of the services were cut during the recession, or I don't know what happened during that time. But we really do need to revisit that and continue to explore that option. And I know many of our residents in District 5 would truly appreciate it, so thank you so much.
I have a question for Jody regarding the Buzz. I know that Benedictine University has requested that the Buzz go by the Marriott Hotel and then drop off students, and basically so it can be utilized by the new college students in downtown, and I feel that Wilkes would probably have the same sentiment. I know that's an idea that's supported by myself and some of my colleagues on council. Has that been included in both the short-term and long-term plans for the Transit Master Plan?
It hasn't been included in the long-term plans, but in the short-term, we are looking at the Buzz, making adjustments to it in the near future to make connections to the light rail and make those connections into downtown.
Okay.
We're working on route, it's, right now, we have to look at the route and how best to make it the most efficient way to serve those areas and make those connections. So we're looking at that, and then what the cost of that would be to the city to make those additions.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kavanaugh.
Thank you. And in follow-up on that, I think we're looking to acquire some new replacement vehicles for the Buzz, correct?
We did. We got the new replacement vehicles last year. They're the, they're now silver, and the old ones were white. So we have, we have the new vehicles. We just need to figure out the most efficient way to serve that area.
Great. The other comments I wanted to make over the transit plan as a whole is, I think it's really, it's really well-done. I like the holistic approach. I think it recognizes the, kind of the changing attitude in the country to be multimodal, both for millennials and for old people like me, who may not be able to drive at some point in the future for whatever reasons. But I think you're creating options for pedestrians, for bicyclists, easier access to get to the various transit services. And so I think that that's a great guiding principle to encourage us to be a walkable community and a connected community, as I think that will help sustain neighborhoods over time. And so I think it's a job very well-done.
Thank you. Council, any other questions or comments? Thank you very much, folks. Great presentation. We appreciate your hard work. Next item on the agenda is information pertaining to the current job order contracting projects.
Mayor and Council, we just wanted to clarify one thing. For some reason, we just had a little glitch and only one project showing up for you on the JLC, so Beth's just going to mention the second project, just so you know.
Okay.
Yes, we had a little technology glitch with our spreadsheet and Legstar. There are actually two JLC projects on the list. The second one that's visible in Legstar but not online is a second project out at the Southeast Water Reclamation Plant where we're replacing the submersible mixers in the aeration basins. So, and its total value is $250,000.
Sounds like some nice submersible mixers.
Yeah, they are.
Okay.
Gold-plated.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on the submersible? All right. Thank you, Beth. Next item on the agenda is here, reports on meetings or conferences attended. Council? Maybe speaking for everyone, I know we, most of, I know, I think all of us were present at a walkthrough of the Oakland Athletics Training Facility yesterday, which was very impressive, and we're anxiously awaiting spring training, I think as most of Mesa is. It's going to be a banner year for Mesa to have two teams in town. If there's nothing else, scheduling the meetings and general information, Mr. Brady.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a really busy weekend coming ahead of us. First, on this Saturday is Make a Difference Day. Over 1,500 volunteers are expected to participate, and more than 50 love-your-block projects across the city. If you have questions, you can call, contact Emily Blinkenship at 480-644-5701 if you want to participate in one of those programs. We also have the Didos Muertos Festival this weekend at the Mesa Arts Center from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and then Sunday from noon to 5:00. It's a free event, and parking is also free. There'll be food and merchants and two stages of live entertainment. Also, at the Mesa Arts Center Saturday morning will be also our Latino Town Hall, so invite individuals out who are interested in participating in actually both of those activities. The Mesa Main Library is hosting a Halloween costume party on Wednesday, October 29th, from 5:00 to 7:00, in the youth activity room. So all ages are welcome, and there'll be activities, crafts, and prizes. And our next study session will be Thursday, October 30th, and that will be followed by an audit and finance committee meeting. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Brady. It's going to be a busy weekend for the city. Appreciate all the staff that are, will be engaged this weekend, helping facilitate those activities. Next item on the agenda is to convene an executive session. I would entertain a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
We will now go to an executive session.